Raven Malone, thank you for being here with us.
Thank you for having me.
You are the most recent candidate in terms of how long you've lived in Palo Alto to run for a city council. You've been here, I think, since the first part of the year, right before COVID hit.
Yes.
And I'm wondering if you can explain what led you to the decision to run? What inspired your candidacy? And what are your key issues that you're concerned with?
Okay. What really inspired me to run was, you know, I moved here, sheltering place happened, and it made me really pay a lot more attention than I was even previously to city council, to just what was going on versus the concerns that I had been hearing about. And it really felt like a lot of people weren't heard, and I mean, me being one of them. And it got to the point where I felt like, you know, the people who wanted change were outnumbered by the people who didn't. And if not me to go up there and help and try to create this change that's been long overdue, then who? And if not now, then when? So, I mean, that's one thing that made me decide to run. But I mean, I love Palo Alto. My fiance and I had our hearts set on Palo Alto long before we moved here, I mean, pretty much since we came into the Bay Area. And we would come up here on weekends and hang out and go to the stores and the stores, the restaurants and the farmer's market. And there was this really cool tea shop that closed unfortunately before COVID happened. And it just felt like home already. But unfortunately, we had a hard time finding something that we can afford within our budget because Palo Alto is very expensive. And luckily, we were finally able to find something, and now we're very happy to be here. But Palo Alto has amazing resources. We have three great hospitals. We have a pretty great school system. I mean, I also want to help in the school system area or just be a voice with them. I feel like the city council should be more involved with things that go on in the school system, but that's another story. But that being said, it is important that we address the issues that are in our city, especially because we're kind of leaders of Silicon Valley. We did, Palo Alto had a really big part in the creation of what Silicon Valley is today and the innovation. So it's important that we address the concerns of our residents. And I just envision a Palo Alto where everyone feels safe and can ride their bikes to and from work and from school, families and kids, and get home safely, and where we have better public transportation, where everyone has a place to call home, and where, you know, everyone feels safe, especially when they're calling the police.
So you said that you got here and were struck by the fact that the people that were advocating for change were outnumbered by the people that didn't want change. What do you mean by change? What are you referring to when you think of that?
I guess improvements. So like housing, protected bicycle lanes or better ways to bicycle, safer ways to bicycle, because one big issue here also is bicycling accidents. And I mean, even one of my roommates got into an accident. And it seems like every time I bring it up or every time I bring up wanting to improve the way that we can bicycle safely, someone has a story or someone that they know got hit by a car. So just things like this. And I mean, fiber isn't a life or death issue, but if anything has showed me how important internet is, it's COVID. So that's also another thing. And it's just like, there are a few things in the city that have been talked about for a very long time that haven't really had much action done. Great separation, that's been something that's been talked about for a long time. And I mean, there are a lot of people who have died because of that. And I mean, not because of, well, yes, because of the lack of great separation, but I mean, there was the string of suicides. And it's just, I feel like if anything, that should prove that that's a really important issue and it should be met with urgency. And I didn't feel like it was.
So Raven, you've talked about housing as being one issue that you care about. The regional housing needs allocation process indicates that the city should allot for maybe 15% to 20% more homes in the next 10 years plus. Do you support this kind of growth? And how do you think the city can achieve it, given that it's been failing to add 300 units per year?
Yes, so that is one big issue. The city has been failing to add more housing, and I do support a fast growth. So when it comes to housing, I would like to focus on, one, ending exclusionary zoning. We can fit more people in the area if we were just to get rid of that and allow more duplexes and triplexes and fourplexes. I live in an accessory dwelling unit myself. And I mean, I feel like when I say exclusionary zoning, people automatically think that I want to put a hotel next to their single-family home. And it's like, no, you put housing where it makes sense. So it wouldn't make sense to put any luxury condos or apartment complexes in residential neighborhoods, but you could put them near transit. You could put them downtown Cal Ave, El Camino, where it would fit. And also, the height requirement, that also has a big role in, well, the height minimum has a big role, maximum, the height maximum has a big role, the 50-foot max, has a big role in the, you know, the housing, as well as the density, the parking minimums. So it's like, there are steps that we can take to make it easier for developers to create housing here. We just need to make sure that we do that. If we want to push for housing, we have to make it easier for housing to be here.
So what specific revisions would you propose to the R1 zones, like what revision would you make to the R1 single-family zone? Imagine you want to end exclusionary zoning and just want to make sure you're...
I would just push for more multifamily zoning.
Like in a single-family zone, you would support having multifamily buildings?
I would. I know that there are people who don't want, for example, fourplexes next to their single-family home, which I understand, it makes sense, and I respect that and I acknowledge that. But where would we be okay with building these? Like, these units need to happen. There's a regional housing crisis, and it is very bad in the Bay Area, especially because there's tech here. So there are a lot of people who want to move here, but then they have nowhere to live. And that forces people out because of the skyrocket in housing costs. So that's why we have people who live in Santa Cruz, who work here, who live in Sacramento, in Tracy. And that's a little ridiculous, especially when you think about our essential workers who also have to make those long commutes, when you think about the emissions that we're putting into the environment by forcing people to make these long commutes. It's critical that we do bring housing. So I mean, it is important that we work together as a city to make these decisions. Of course, I would feel a little out of line for me to say, no, we should put triplexes right next door to the, in this single-family neighborhood. But we do need to find locations that are allocated for those kinds of housing.
How would you ensure that the housing that is built is more on the affordable side rather than just additional expensive housing?
So I mean, there are ways to do that. For one, commercial development. With commercial development, you can get developers to put into the affordable housing fund. And with that, we can take it and get it matched. So then, instead of having money to build one affordable unit, we can build two. Also, if we do things like create more density, more room for density, so raise the height limit, we can encourage developers to maybe instead of putting 15% affordable units, they may put 25%. And then they're still able to make a profit because they're still making more units.
But wouldn't relying on commercial development to help affordable housing also exacerbate the housing crisis because you'll have more workers and more people who need a place to live in town? So how would you ensure that the new commercial development would not make the housing problem worse?
So don't get me wrong, I'm not pushing for commercial development. I was just answering the question as for how we could afford more commercial development. But I mean, if you make it easier for developers to come here and to build here, then they will pay for it. We don't have to pay for it. If it's beneficial enough for them to come here and to build here, they'll pay for it. The problem is that we've made it so hard in Palo Alto for them to build housing, they don't want to.
So one of the conundrums that seems to exist with denser housing along public transit routes is that public transit right now seems to be making a retreat from our city. So VTA is scaling back. So how do we, how do we deal with that?
I mean, it is a dance. It is a dance. We have to figure it out. Between housing, businesses and transportation, it's a dance, and you have to figure out how to make it equal in a way that benefits everyone. And right now, we need to focus on housing because, I mean, that's what's hurting the most. We have empty office spaces. We have places for businesses who want to move here. We have buildings that are for lease currently where people can move in and set up their shops. But we do have a serious need for housing, so I would definitely...
Okay. And one final thing on housing then. Do you support rezoning office space, like in the Stanford Research Park for housing?
I do.
Somewhere related to housing, would you support a rent stabilization ordinance or any kind of cap on renting leases that the landlords own and charge? It's been a mission to split the council over the last few years.
I know. Rent stabilization is a very tricky subject. And I support some form of rent stabilization, but I would have to look more into it, or I don't feel like I would support rent stabilization across the board, like maybe on only affordable units. But there should be some sort of rent stabilization in the area, yes.
Are you supporting Proposition 21?
Yes.
So that would give local jurisdictions the authority to impose rent control, rent stabilization?
I'm sorry, what?
That proposition, if it passes, would give local governments the ability to impose rent control, rent stabilization in their communities.
Okay, I think I was confused on your prop, I'm sorry.
Okay, that's fine.
So probably not.
So you're not a proponent of taking measures that would limit the rental housing prices within the city through rent control or some rent stabilization process?
I support rent control to an extent. It's not a solid yes or no answer because I don't feel like it's a one-size-fits-all.
Okay. I want to shift gears to police reform. This is a topic that you've expressed a lot of concern with and how we might change in Palo Alto. What are the measures that, as a council person, you would advocate to move that process forward beyond the eight...
Eight can't wait.
Eight can't wait items?
So I think that eight can't wait is kind of a minimum. And I would like to see a lot more done. I would like to see a lot more when it comes to accountability, when it comes to transparency. I would honestly like to reimagine the way we do community safety in a way that we can have social services respond to mental health crises, to drug overdose, to assisting the unhoused. And then the police, of course, for only the things that the police can handle, theft, murder, crimes. I just really want to ensure that everyone is safe. And it's hard to do that when you ask someone with a gun to report to a situation that they may be, that may be unfamiliar territory, and then that may cause them to react in a way that wouldn't have been in the best, the best judgment. So just to make sure that everyone's safe, I'd like to just have the most experienced people report to those situations.
Palo Alto's police union contract, which is up for renegotiation next year, so the timing is good, contains a provision that most, many cities have, which is that disputes about disciplinary actions can be appealed to an arbitrator and go through binding arbitration, which has thwarted many attempts to remove police officers from the force in lots of cities. Would you advocate that attempts be made in that negotiation to remove the binding arbitration provision of the current union contract?
I would, because it's really important that when we say accountability, we actually have accountability, and that kind of makes it hard, especially when you can't fire a police officer who is currently on the force, who's used excessive force, who's used racial slurs, who has done something that is not under the umbrella term "serve and protect the community."
Do you, do you think that there's additional training that's needed of the police to stop the kinds of interactions that have been going on for years, for decades, in which people feel like they are being mistreated, they're pulled over for no particularly good reason? What's at the root, do you think of that, and how can that be curtailed?
So, yes, to answer your question, but it kind of doesn't stop there. So there was a study done at Stanford, I don't know if you guys are familiar with it, but where it was kind of the same thing. They gave some students unlimited power over other students. And it was supposed to be a two-week study, I believe, and they had to cut it early because of how bad it got. And it's like, that's kind of the situation that we have in some police forces. And that's kind of what makes the police feel like they can do whatever they want to whoever they want, and there are no consequences, because that's what's been happening. So, yes, I do support that, but, I mean, I do feel that way. But we also have to make sure that there is some kind of accountability, there's some kind of consequences if they're not holding up to their end of the bargain and if they're not treating residents with respect and dignity and like their people.
So one idea I've heard floated around is that, so the independent police auditor reports should go directly to the city council so that they can deal with the issues that have been presented, and there's no possibility of the report getting stalled somewhere, you know?
Or getting sent to a different auditor somewhere else.
Yeah, exactly. Do you support the IPA reporting directly to the council?
I mean, that's an idea. I feel like it should be reported somewhere because I've seen where there have been an obvious use of excessive force, and then the auditor's like, nothing was done wrong. They followed proper protocol. And I'm like, where? Where is this proper protocol that they followed? So, yeah.
Well, you touched upon accountability when we talked about binding arbitration and shifting resources to other kind of professionals who can handle some of the calls, which are big reforms. But I want to ask about transparency. The department has kind of a pattern of not releasing body cam footage and other documents to media organizations or even council members who requested it. What, if anything, do you think could be done to improve transparency in the police department?
I mean, it would just have to be a requirement. These are the guidelines, this is the information that we want. Please make this available by doing XYZ or on this platform. It would have to, there would have to be guidelines that would have to be followed in order to ensure accountability, and there would have to be consequences if that isn't held up.
Do you think the city council has a role in ensuring that these requirements are being followed?
I mean, the council could set the guidelines, but as far as ensuring accountability, that would be up to the chief, up to the union. I mean, it's kind of one of those situations where you can set the rules, but then they can come back and say, no, that's okay. I don't think so.
So you mentioned fiber to the home in your introduction, and that's been the holy grail for 20-plus years for the city?
I mean, of course, this is Silicon Valley.
What, what proposals do you have that you, that you think would actually move this project forward?
So the problem is that this is not really seen as a priority, which, given all the other issues that are going on in the city, I can't disagree with that. So I don't, we may see fiber in the next 10 years, maybe, but I do hope that they get it rolling. I know that currently, we have the bone structure for fiber, and it's, some businesses have it currently, and they have a plan to get it to note so that they're able to pull the utilities information real-time, just seeing how much electricity you're using real-time, which would be very convenient. But then, let's take it a step forward. Let's just go ahead and put it into those residence, those residential areas as well so that everyone has access to fiber. I mean, we already have our own utilities, we might as well have our own fiber network too.
How do you feel about the city's response to the COVID crisis? Are you satisfied that everything that could be done has been done by the city to address the business needs and the health needs?
I'm not. I'm not. I don't want to beat up on the city. They're doing great. But I do feel like they have missed a few marks when it comes to COVID response, especially when it comes to residents, when it comes to businesses. They are a little slow on getting free COVID testing, whereas Fremont and Hayward have had it for a while. And they, the business bailout, I also feel was not great, and they could have used that money for other options instead of using it in a lottery system to only help, I think it was 50 businesses. And there were over 2,000, I believe, that applied for assistance. And I would have just rather seen them, I would have rather have seen them create something, whether it be a comprehensive marketing plan or just something that benefited, if not everyone, most of them or more than 50 people. Yeah, I feel like some more thought should have gone into that.
You mentioned the spending of resources for fiber and for COVID relief. As you know, the city's in kind of a tight budget situation right now.
Right.
It's got quite a few infrastructure projects on its horizon, bike bridge, fire station, public safety building. Do you think any of those projects should be deferred or canceled altogether?
I definitely feel like we should reanalyze the budget and look at what projects are coming up and decide what programs should be priority right now and what should not.
Well, the public safety building is probably the biggest one. It's like $115 million price tag roughly. Do you think the city should move ahead with it in the next year?
So that is a program, that is one of the infrastructure projects that I think should take a hold. I also was hoping that they would take a hold on the parking structure for downtown. That was $50 million, which they did, thankfully. But yes, that is one that I think, especially when our, I mean, our fire stations are browned out and then we're making a new public safety building. So it seems like that's not a good priority.
They're also pursuing a new fire station. How is that effort as well, the Mission Park Fire Station project?
I think I would right now, at least until after, after it's no longer fire season and things, and the state isn't literally burning, just so that all of our, our fire stations are properly functioning and out of go. Because right now, our fire stations are browned out, correct? Yeah. So I would just like to make sure that they have the proper funding that they need, even if that means that they have to wait a little while for a new fire station.
So cutting spending is obviously one way to deal with the budget. Increasing revenues is another.
Yes.
How do you feel about implementing a business tax after the pandemic is concluded on large corporations?
So, I'm sorry, what's that? Okay. So I would actually like to incorporate a, a business tax on the large corporations. I want to make sure that we're protecting our small businesses. I've spoken to some of them, they're hurting. But we do have a lot of really big businesses here who have the money, and we need the revenue, especially now. I understand the city's decision to not have a business tax on the budget right now because it could have possibly hurt small businesses as well. But I would like to see a business tax on businesses that have, let's say, more than 50, 60 employees and just gauged by how many employees they have, so like a head tax. And then I would go a little more specific and say that I would like to have that head tax fluctuate based on how big the company is.
And then also, businesses pre-pandemic, certainly we're bringing in a lot of employees contributing to traffic congestion. What responsibility, if any, do you feel like a corporation has to either pay the city or address that problem that's coming up?
So that kind of goes into the dance, right? So I feel like if a business is bringing in a lot more people to the city, then it's important that they also help with traffic, with parking, especially in the areas of downtown and just where there's already limited invaluable parking because it's so limited. Yeah, I mean, I feel like they should also contribute to the city. I mean, if they're not contributing with revenue, they, there has to be something.
Do you think that new, new office development should actually, like, there should be some sort of pledge to provide housing or funding for housing for all the employees that are hired there?
I don't know if I would make it a requirement, but that would be nice. So maybe like an incentive if they do or something?
Raven, have you reached a tentative view of the Caltrain rail crossing alternatives? This is an issue that obviously may be down the road a ways now that Caltrain is going to do its own study, but of the alternatives that have been presented to the community, is there one that you're more attracted to?
So I don't want to risk not being able to vote, but I do think that we should definitely consider some of the options. I know that, I mean, there's the closing Churchill option, but then there will be issues with traffic and congestion in a lot of other areas, so we would have to improve traffic, well, the flow of traffic on Oregon Expressway in Barcadero. And it's, it's just, we definitely have to weigh all of our options when we're making that decision, right? And we, I feel like it's also important that we involve the neighborhoods that will be directly affected and make sure that we're not sacrificing real estate and homes. And I mean, at the end of the day, we just want to ensure everyone's safety, and we just really have to figure out the best way of doing that. But while we're making sure that we're also benefiting everyone that's involved, including Caltrain, the residents, the city.
Do you think it's impossible to improve in Barcadero in Oregon, like, traffic conditions to the extent where closing Churchill would not have a traffic impact in that area? Do you feel like the current closing Churchill proposal has improvements in those areas? There's disagreement over whether that would really affect the situation, how many people
Well, I don't know about if closing, uh, Churchill is a good idea. I know there are some people who love it, there are some people who hate it. But just basing it off the fact that, um, there's already the, uh, Park Boulevard. So, I mean, I really don't want to risk a kind of a hard, a hard situation for them to leave, um, that live in the Southgate area. We definitely want to make sure that they have a good way to get out. So i- if we were to close Churchill, I feel like there would have to be a lot of other decisions made when it comes to increasing their flow of traffic.
I think we're, unless anybody's got one final question? No, we're good?
Ah.
I think we're out of time. So thank you very much for being here and good luck in your campaign.
Thank you so much for having me.